Okay, here we go. Welcome to the June 20th, 2023 meeting of the City of Lake Forest City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Certainly. Honorable Mayor Tac?
Here.
Alderman Novit?
Here.
Alderman Notes?
Here.
Alderman Powers?
Here.
Oops, sorry about that. Alderman Preschleck is absent. Alderman Gashkarian?
Here.
Alderman Weber is absent and Alderman Walder is absent. Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
All rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Very good. Okay, the first item on the agenda is comments by Mayor. I would like to begin my comments tonight by addressing an unexpected situation which arose approximately two weeks ago. At that time, I was informed of an occurrence which ultimately resulted in the resignation of First Ward Alderman Terrence Mealing. In consultation with the city attorney and city manager, it was determined that the responsibility for nominating a replacement was solely within the purview of the mayor. Upon establishing this fact, I identified an appropriate candidate who I will present to the city council for confirmation as First Ward Alderman. Prior to doing so, I would like to ask the city attorney to provide the legal basis for this process.
Thank you, Mayor. Under state law, when a vacancy occurs, which occurred by reason of the fact that Alderman of the First Ward submitted an unconditional letter of resignation creating the vacancy, the mayor, under the statute, is given 60 days to advance a nomination to fill a vacancy. And once the nomination is presented to the council, the council has 30 days to act on that to confirm the nomination. The appointment will be until the following municipal election next spring, where a candidate will be elected for the remainder, the remaining one year of the two-year term.
So, just for a matter of clarification, in case it comes up, it was my understanding that the city charter identified a slightly different process. So how does the process you just described relate to that?
So the city charter actually calls for a special election to fill vacancies, but the General Assembly has changed the election code to eliminate all special elections, which the Illinois Supreme Court has said supersedes charters that conflict with it. And so there are no longer special elections available, and the statutory procedure for filling vacancies prevails.
Very good. Are there any questions regarding this matter? Thank you for that. At this time, I would like to formally nominate Joseph Waldeck for the position of First Ward Alderman. As a matter of background, Joe grew up in Lake Forest after his parents moved here in 1957. He comes from a family devoted to public service and giving back. His father served as mayor of Lake Forest from 1978 to 1981, and handed down his passion for the community to Joe. Joe, an attorney distinguished himself as a fair and respected Associate Judge for the 19th Judicial Circuit Court of Lake County. He stepped down from the bench in December of 2022. His accomplishments and associations are many, including serving on the Gordon Community Center Board of Directors, and most recently having served as the Chairman of the city's Legal Committee from 2021 to 2022. May I have a motion to approve the nomination of Joseph Waldeck for the position of First Ward Alderman?
So moved.
We will have a roll call vote.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Honorable Mayor Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Five yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Congratulations, Alderman. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Joseph Waldeck.
Joseph Waldeck.
Having been appointed to the office of Alderman of the City of Lake Forest.
Having been appointed to the office of the City of Alderman of the City of Lake Forest and the County of Lake.
And the County of Lake.
And the State of Illinois.
And the State of Illinois.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will discharge the duties of said office.
And that I will discharge the duties of said office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, everybody. I just want to thank the mayor for the nomination. I really appreciate it. It's an honor and a privilege to serve just to quick people. Of course, I want to thank my wife for her encouragement and her guidance. And I have there who's, I can see his picture's a little bit skewed. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
There you go. Does he have to sing his college fight song or something for us, maybe?
The next item on the agenda is comments by city manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. Good evening. I'm really pleased tonight, this is one of my favorite community spotlights of the year to introduce Croya manager Todd Nahigian. Before I do, I just want to comment that last month, I had the opportunity to attend the Croya Awards Ceremony. I know there were several elected officials there as well. And every single year I go, I'm always amazed both at, you know, sort of the, I'd say the maturity of all of the kids who are there, those who are being recognized in particular, but also just as it serves as a reminder of how impactful Croya as a service and organization is on the lives of the youth in this community. And that's a testament to the staff we have there. So I know I'm going to turn it over to Todd in a second, but I want to make sure I can also recognize Rick, Catherine, and Leslie, who I see here as well. Really, I can't overstate the job that they do, and there are a few services that we provide that truly touch people's lives to that degree that Croya does. And so I want to just acknowledge them for that. And with that, I'm happy to turn it over now to Todd Nahigian.
All right, Mr. Mayor and Alderman, this is awesome. I'm excited to be back. We love coming here, especially after our awards night, which we were thankful to have Mayor Tac and Alderman Notes attend this year. So you guys, this is an exciting time for us. We got a lot of kids here tonight to support our young lady who won the essay contest. We got a few things that I want to share with you first. We have an article that was written by two of our students, Zoe Francis, who was our former chairman this year, and Luca Ferrioli. And Tyler Klein is here, he's going to hand out the article they wrote for their Lake Forest newspaper, the Lake Forest Scout. I don't think the city council has seen it yet, but it is a discussion about why students should go on the Croya retreats. And that's one of our most important things that we do. So you guys can come up if you want a few of them. And we also have T-shirts for everybody. Our Croya T-shirt theme this year is Uno, because we play a lot of Uno at Croya, and it's really wild. You guys want to come up and hand out some shirts?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I was excited to see that tonight would be the officially first meeting of Joe Waldeck. I want you guys to know that the, it's come full circle, that Frank Waldeck, back in 1980, of course, was the mayor when Croya began. And this is our 43rd year that we're celebrating. Croya just turned 43 on June 6th, and we're proud to say we're going strong. Our programs over the last year have been outstanding, from our youth-led weekly meetings to all the fun activities that we've done. We actually had a mechanical bull at Croya this year. We got inside bubble balls and played soccer. We have all sorts of fun activities, including our first-ever Big Wheel Grand Prix, which was raced right outside of the building at Croya in the parking lot. We take many trips with the kids, from anywhere from Fright Fest to the ski and snowboard trip, to our Cubs Night Game, which is actually coming up next week. We played in our 24th Annual Donut Bowl Flag Football Game with the Lake Forest Police Department, and our 20th Annual Donut Cup Floor Hockey Game with the Police Department as well. The football is for the high school students and the floor hockey is for the middle school students. We're going to be building parade floats for both 4th of July and Lake Forest Day parades. We go on a number of very serious activities throughout the year, whether it be community service or leadership training. Two of the biggest ones are our retreats, which is the article that you received tonight about why kids should go on that retreat. We take typically 90 to 100 students out of town for the weekend. We take away their phones and they actually get to know each other and explore all sorts of cool group activities that we have set for them. We also do our peer training class for about 100 students at the high school, and we've expanded to an entire class of freshmen at Woodlands Academy. And then our middle school youth worker, Leslie Bruning, she does our Peer Assistance and Leadership Program at Lake Bluff Middle School. So we're in the schools constantly doing all sorts of programming. We helped out this year with the Lake Forest Police Bike Rodeo. We went to the Camp Hope Carnival. We've been to House of Peace in Waukegan. We do a lot of things locally, like help Gordon Community Center with their kids-only holiday shopping program. And then we hosted two of District 67's APT food drives throughout the year, where they, where we sort thousands of pounds of food that are then delivered to shelters. We most recently had a Battle of the Bands, which was really exciting, held right at Lake Forest High School. We get to partner with the tech crew and the new media students to do all sorts of great AV special effects. We'll be at Lake Forest Day Band Jam on Tuesday night, August 1st, coming up with a set of bands that'll play and entertain you. And to be really honest, some of the things that we do are awesome in the sense that the kids get to come and build connections and friendships, and they don't even have to pay for it. That's one of the best parts about Croya, they can come and do lots of those things. However, there is a fundraising component. And this year, the youth sold over $13,000 in point setup and other plants in order to raise money for Croya. We also raised over $30,000 in February at the Croya Bowl, which is our annual, or biannual fundraiser for the Croya Foundation. And between user fees and facility rentals for the community groups, like the Artisan Guild and other groups in town, Croya raised over $50,000 in user fees this year. So we're definitely on the move, we're definitely excited, there's a lot of energy among the kids, but we also have to acknowledge that there are some tough times, too. We get a lot of kids coming to our staff to work with them on issues that they're going through. We do some really good programs to try to lessen the stress, and we bring in the dogs from the Paws for Patrick group to do emotional support. But we also work closely with all the school social workers in the districts locally in order to make sure that kids get the support that they need. Our youth program numbers, through our performance measurements for the City of Lake Forest, typically we, our goal is to reach somewhere between 300 and 325 programs, meetings, and classes that we'll teach throughout the school year. This fiscal year, we were at 375. So the amount of programs and things that the kids are helping us do and that we're providing for and serving the students has been an all-time high. Approximately 10,000 participants in those programs came through, whether it be in the schools or at Croya or on our field trips. And our goal for our after-school drop-in hours, which happen every day from 2:30 or 3:30, depending on when school gets out, until 5:30, was over 3,000, and that's typically our goal as well. We have a music school in the basement, Activator Music Academy, and we have all sorts of opportunities for kids to come up with great activities that they're excited to do. And then, of course, our Croya Foundation, every year picks students that have applied for these awards in order to be acknowledged in honor of Frank Farwell, our Community Service Award, who used to be mayor and was the Alderman. At the time, Frank Waldeck was the mayor, commissioned Frank Farwell to figure out what was going on with the teenagers in the late 70s and said, "We need to figure something out that's going to benefit the kids." Also Gene Hotchkiss for Community Citizenship, former president of Lake Forest College. And finally, for Margot Martino, one of our first directors, the Spirit of Croya Essay Contest. Many of the seniors write essays as to what the spirit of Croya has meant to them throughout their years in high school and even middle school. And now I'd like to introduce our 2023 Spirit of Croya Margot Martino Essay Contest winner, Annie Swift. Annie served this year as one of the top ignite chairs on the Croya Executive Committee. She was also a retreat leader for Croya's retreats during her junior and senior years. We're excited to have her read tonight. I know that a few of you got to hear the essay back when we had our event, but I hope you enjoy it.
Hi, everybody. My name is Annie Swift. Thank you for the introduction, Todd. Thank you for having us here tonight. And yeah, this essay is just about what Croya has given to me and why I appreciate everything all of you guys have done. So, Croya is summer. You may be wondering how a little red brick building tucked away in our little town could be described as summer, but if you stick with me, you might just find out. To me, summer means a break from real life, endless fun, fresh air, a bright sun, and spending time with the people you love. Summer is a time in your life you hope never ends. Croya is the same. You've probably heard people say that Croya is their outlet. It's a step away from the stresses we all experience as high school students. I, as well as various others, can attest to this. The second you walk through the door, you are greeted with the most loving, authentic, and truly a one-of-a-kind group of people. It's a breath of fresh air that lightens people's lives and the reason closing this chapter of my youth feels nearly impossible. I can wholeheartedly say that I would not be the person I am without Croya. This community has taught me everything I need to know about what it takes to be a good person. I've learned that it's okay to take off the smiley mask we all wear. You never really know what someone is going through, but most importantly, it's okay to not be okay. Croya has allowed me to see the value behind the saying we all know as "Never judge a book by its cover," because everyone has a few chapters that they don't read out loud. Through the guidance of Croya, I understand the importance of reading those chapters, because in order to truly love who you are, you cannot hate the experiences that have shaped you. My chapter began as a freshman, admiring all the upperclassmen shined their light on anyone who seemed to be dim and shared their fiery passion to anyone who was willing to listen. It seemed as though they had a never-ending supply, so I followed their light, which led me to Croya. I wanted in on it, too, so I decided I needed to attend the infamous retreat in the fall of my freshman year. It wasn't too long into the retreat that I realized my peers had failed to mention one thing: the course of my life would completely change. I was once eager to peek over the wall everyone has built so high, but after that weekend, it felt as though I was gifted a ladder to reach the other side. It was the exact moment I realized who I wanted to be. I wanted to be summer. I wanted to be the sun, the fresh air, the outlet. I felt this urge to enlighten others' lives and give them something to look forward to. Inevitably, I soon found myself watching all the people I had looked up to writing their last chapter and eventually shed their light elsewhere, which led to some rainy days. The sun didn't shine, the air felt scarce, which made me believe it was finally my turn to be summer. It soon became evident that this task was quite literally impossible. I put myself at fault for not supplying the warmth everyone so desperately craved. I felt guilty for having rainy days, walking around with a cloud over my head, and wondering how all the people I had idolized kept their sun shining when I couldn't seem to get mine out. Life gained a whole new meaning when Croya taught me that rain is just as important as a sun, because if there's no rain, flowers will not bloom, grass would not be green, and rivers would run dry. The sun will always come around, but if you force it out and make it constant, it loses its meaning and becomes ordinary. I learned that life is full of unexpected ups and downs, but it's impossible to appreciate one without the other, just like how summer wouldn't be summer without fall, winter, and spring. Even on the rainiest days, I can still find the sun, not always mine, but all of yours. As we know, the sun is illuminating and rain can be discouraging, but it takes both to create something extraordinary, which is why I titled my final chapter "Rainbow." With only a few pages, cramming in as many memories as possible, left wishing I could flip back to Chapter 1, I've realized that in between all of the lines, I've gotten the pleasure of watching you all blossom into the most beautiful and unique souls, each to their own. I will forever hold summer close to my heart and will make it my purpose to help others find their summer. I cannot wait to see all of you shine bright, but only now from afar. Thank you.
Thank you, Annie, that was awesome. Is there anything that you guys would like from us, maybe any questions or anything that you need? Yes?
Annie, I had the opportunity to hear that read at the Croya event, and it was extraordinarily special that first time I heard it and hearing it in your own voice tonight, I didn't lose a step. Wonderful job.
Thank you so much, that means a lot to me.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Annie. And yeah, we can maybe pause for a minute. You guys are welcome to stay if you'd like, but of course, you're welcome to leave and go celebrate as well.
Good decision.
Do you want to think about it?
Yeah, sure.
And Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is opportunity for citizens to address the city council. Are there any citizens who want to address the council? Seeing none, we will move on. The next item is committee reports. The Finance Committee report will be presented by Elizabeth Hollab, Finance Director.
You want to present it? Thank you, Mayor and city council members. This evening's agenda item is requesting city council first reading of the annual appropriation ordinance for fiscal year '24 and approval of rollovers. Although the city council approves the annual budget at the beginning of the city's fiscal year, the actual legal mechanism for expending public funds is via the appropriation ordinance. And under state statute, the appropriation ordinance must be approved and filed with the county clerk by the close of the first quarter of the fiscal year, so by July 31st. So we present this evening for first reading the appropriation ordinance, and then on July 17th, you'll conduct a public hearing and grant final approval to the annual appropriation ordinance and will be all set. Included in the packet is an appropriation ordinance worksheet to kind of walk you through the reconciliation between the budget you approved in April and the annual appropriation ordinance presented for you this evening. There are some differences. So included on the worksheet, we just start out with the budget that was adopted in April by fund, and then show the different reconciling items. So for example, we do remove from the appropriation ordinance the expenditures associated with debt service funds, because the actual approval of those expenditures come with the bond ordinance when you approve each particular bond issue that is accounted for in the budget for those funds. We add to the budget amount rollovers. What are rollovers? Those are amounts that were budgeted in fiscal year '23 that either were not started or were not completed, and so that expenditure needs to be added to fiscal year '24 to allow that expenditure to proceed in the fiscal year '24 period. So included in your packet is a detailed list of all the rollovers by fund, which gives you an idea of the account and the vendor and the amount of the rollover requested by the operating departments. I would note that with this first reading, this list is very preliminary, because we are still paying invoices attributable to fiscal year '23, so this list will look quite different. For the July 17th consideration, the amount will be lower, but those are amounts for specific expenditures that did not get completed in fiscal year '23. We add the library. The library is not included in the city's annual budget, but because it is part of the city legal organization, their budget is added to the appropriation ordinance to allow the appropriation authority for those expenditures. And then that brings us to a subtotal. Added to that subtotal, the city has used a practice for many, many years of adding 10% in the appropriation ordinance to each fund subtotal to allow the council to approve unanticipated expenditures throughout the year without formally requiring a public hearing and a change to the appropriation ordinance. It's important to note that as staff, we work to the budget amount. We do not, we do not use the appropriation ordinance amount in our general ledger system. And so we are operating throughout the year to the budget and not including this 10% contingency amount. But you'll see write-ups throughout the year where those non-budgeted expenditures are approved by the city council and are allowable because of the 10% contingency added in the appropriation ordinance. And then that brings us to the appropriation ordinance by fund, which is identified and delineated throughout the appropriation ordinance presented for your approval. And then as a final note, I would just note that School District 67, because of the charter for the city, is included in the annual appropriation ordinance. That information is not available for first reading, but will be added for final approval in July. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Were there any questions from the council? Hearing none. Are there any public comments? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to approve first reading of the FY 2024 appropriation ordinance.
So moved. Second?
Roll. Okay, we have a second. Is there a roll call vote?
Correct. Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Five yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Okay, the next item is a report from the Public Works Committee presented by Byron Kootz, Superintendent of Engineering.
Good evening, Mayor and members of city council. Unfortunately, I didn't bring any T-shirts to give out, so I apologize for that, but know that going forward. Can everyone hear me? There we go. All right. Tonight, I will be giving an overview of the Alawal Parking Lot Improvements Project. For those in the audience that may not know this location, it is on Middle Fork, just west of Waukegan. This item is on your omnibus agenda for the night. There's a detailed write-up, but we felt that it would be good to, you know, get you aware of the project as we kind of go through the public input process the next month or two, as well as you being aware of it before we bring back a potential construction contract in the spring or fall. We did bring this to the Public Works Committee either last week or the week before, had good discussion, and ultimately did get their approval. So in terms of project need, the existing, the existing lot, the asphalt lot, is deteriorating and is in pretty bad shape, and I think you'll notice that if you go out there. Looking at our pavement condition index, which is a database which measures the surface condition of all of our streets and parking lots, this is actually our worst parking lot out of all of the parking lots that the city manages. In terms of capacity, there's a total of about 80 parking spaces, 40 of those being the existing asphalt spaces and then 40 being the gravel lot. Oftentimes, the parking lot is overcapacity and it spills in the neighborhood, and over the years, a lot of residents have voiced concern with that spillover. With the spots, like I said, there's 80 spots, 40 of them is the existing asphalt, and then 40 is the gravel lot, which is actually Lake County Forest Preserve. We have an intergovernmental agreement with them from 1999, which basically says that at any given time, excuse me, at any- at any given time, we need to have about 40 spots available for their use. So that's, that's separate from our own use. So if you take away their 40 spaces, that leaves 40 spaces for all of the, the other uses that the city has there as well. In terms of just the overall layout of the parking lot currently and how it functions, there's one driveway coming in, there's one drive aisle. The sidewalks are pretty sparse. So if you were to park your car there, you would have to walk on the drive aisle, kind of around traffic, either to go west to the forest preserve or to go to any of the buildings. So with this design, we would look to improve that sidewalk and traffic circulation as well as upgrading all the sidewalks to ADA accessibility. We would also look at improving any drainage concerns that are out there currently as well as adding sustainability enhancements such as a bio swell. And then we would also look to add bike racks and then electric vehicle charging stations. In terms of the users that are out there, the part, you know, the Lake Forest Parks uses it and then the Elawa Farm Foundation, Open Lands, as well as the Lake County Forest Preserve and other users as well. So with all of that usage, the lot and with its age, it really is in need of attention at this time. So now looking at the, the image at the top there that says draft, and that's what indeed it is. It's a draft at this point. It's certainly not final design. We use this to go out for proposals to seek final engineering, final design engineering services. But it is, it is definitely not a final product at this time. In terms of the scope of the project, it's pretty similar to the Waveland Park parking lot. For those that remember that, I believe that was either the last summer or the summer before. So basically, the scope of the project is resurfacing the existing lot, which is in the lighter gray on the south part of the, or on the bottom part of that image, and then expanding the parking lot to the north, which is at the darker gray, and adding about 30 parking spaces. And like I said, it's still a draft design. If the, the, the work is awarded, you know, the black will do a concept or two to tweak it and then they'll go straight into the final design. Looking at the picture to the west, you'll see the gravel lot that I mentioned earlier, which primarily serves for Lake County Forest Preserve users. We did approach the county about potentially them paving it with asphalt as part of our project. They said at this time, it is not budgeted, so they're not looking to pursue that at this time. In terms of a project timeline, we have been coordinating, well, with many departments, but especially with the Community Development Department with Director Zerniak. And she has met with the HOA in early May and presented this initial concept and plans to go back sometime in July, I believe, with, with a final concept or a more developed concept at that time, as well as a landscape screening plan. We'll have landscaping on this parking lot that'll be consistent with any of the parking lots or other projects that we do, which is intended to try to screen from the adjacent houses that are in that area. In terms of final cost estimates, whenever we programmed out this work, we did it in a way so that we can get those estimates prior to our fiscal year 25 budget submitter in early October. That being said, the construction for this project is actually already currently scheduled right now in the fiscal year 24 budget. So it'll only be affected if we need to make some kind of change, if we have to add some additional funds, but we're looking to avoid that. In terms of construction, we will be coordinating with Elawa. We've already started that process. Prelimarily, we think that we would either perform the work, the construction in like April or May or either in like fall, like late October or November, because that's usually when it kind of fits in better with, with their schedule. But at the end of the day, we will coordinate with them and we'll have our construction schedule reflect minimizing the impact to their operations. Now moving on to the request for proposal process. So that was a staff-initiated process. Believe we had 10 or 11 firms that actually picked up the proposal and looked at it. Ultimately, we received four proposals. If you look at the chart on the right, you'll see the four that we received. Black Engineering was decided to be the best fit for this project and they were also the lowest cost proposal. So the plan is, or what we're asking for tonight is for approval of the full budgeted amount, which is $34,816, which includes a contingency in the amount of $5,416, which would be for any unforeseen design issues that come up or maybe, you know, adding in one more concept change. And with that, I can, well, this is part of your omnibus vote consideration. This is part of your packet tonight, as I said. And then with that, I can take any questions.
I have one. Looking at the handicap spaces in the diagram, how come the, the space that's allotted to ease ingress and egress in and out of the cars is only, there's four of those parts, but five spaces. How does it work? Is there a requirement that there be one? Oh, is that one way over in the corner? Where the slash lines are?
Generally, there is one per spot. I know what you're asking. If, most likely, we'll switch this. So right now, we're showing it at like a 60-degree angle spaces, like diagonal spaces. We'll most likely change this to 90 degrees and then that issue kind of goes away.
Okay.
Yeah, because if you have 90-degree spots, then you're able to actually share that.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a, I have a comment, Mayor. Byron, Byron, thanks for your presentation.
Yes, thank you.
You know, I think it's, it's worthwhile noting, and I've always kind of looked at Elawa Farm as, you know, really, we have many jewels throughout the city of Lake Forest and everybody thinks of our beach as the one on the east side. And just my own personal opinion, that Elawa Farm area, as well as a forest preserve, is probably the jewel of the west side. I think this is long overdue and as you had articulated, there, there are really four stakeholders down there with the Elawa Foundation, Open Lands, Forest Preserve, and then the park system. And as you all probably recall, we sunsetted wildlife. So we have a, a brief period of time now where we may be in a slight little dip because Rob and all of his reptiles are not out there right now. But we know, do know moving forward that the Elawa Foundation, we're probably going to need to modify their special use permit, their SUP. And there are going to be other things that are going to evolve out there. And I think doing a comprehensive design like this is, it's, it's, it's time and certainly the parking lot is, is beyond its lifespan right now. But I think looking forward and sort of projecting out what else may occur out there is, is really critical and making sure that we don't overbuild, but definitely making sure we don't underbuild because there are things that are going to come forward that are unknown. So I think we need to make sure we can accommodate for the future. So thank you, Byron. Looking, Byron, looking forward to
Yeah, thank you.
your next proposal.
So I have a question for you. It's kind of nerdy. Are, are there any surface ratings for parking lots that automatically trigger a recommendation to rebuild like we have for, for roads? And I understand that they change from year to year depending on how much money we have available.
Yeah, so we, we collect the pavement condition data every three years. So there's like a van that's hired that basically drives all of our roads, all of our parking lots. And then they have lasers and different, different sensors that collects that information and then runs it through formulas and computers. And then ultimately, what we get is, well, it's a pretty big spreadsheet, but a list of the pavement conditions per street and per parking lot. Right now, our kind of average number that we're shooting for would, would be like a 65. So like anything that would be below that would be lower than the standard that we're, we're aiming for. But there isn't necessarily a, a magic number that once it gets that, you know, hits that number, we just go out and, and do it automatically. But anything that's below that 65 is when we're really paying attention to it. And then at that point during our annual resurfacing program and when we're developing the budget for parking lots, we'll go out and we'll actually do a visual inspection. And it's really the combination of those pavement conditions that we get from that consultant as well as our visual inspection coordination with streets. And that's when we make the individual determinations and recommendations for budgeting and for what streets to do.
Okay. And the last question I have is, there was mention in here about the permeability of the gravel portion of the parking lot and that the forest preserve wanted to retain a permeable surface. Is a gravel parking lot actually a permeable surface or is, is that a fabrication? Because it seems to me that a compacted gravel parking lot is no more permeable than a poorly conditioned asphalt parking lot.
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying. I mean, from a drainage perspective, there would certainly be a little bit of a difference between compacted gravel and like asphalt or concrete. But when we did reach out to them, I mean, I think from their perspective, for their use, it doesn't necessarily make a difference in an application like this if it's asphalt or gravel. The one thing I will say from reading the intergovernmental agreement that was originally approved in 1999 and then I forget what year it was revised, is we're actually maintaining that gravel. So they, they don't have that maintenance that goes on with it. But there would be a little bit of a difference.
Are there any more comments? Am I supposed to ask for public comment here? I believe so. Nope, not required. All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the report from the Environmental Sustainability Committee, Reagan Walsh, Management Analyst.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Can everyone hear me okay? Thank you for your time this evening. I am very excited to be able to present on behalf of the Environmental Sustainability Committee on a potential new opportunity for a food scrap curbside composting service. I may make that an acronym before I have to say that again. Do you want me to do the slides or you got it? Okay, thanks. So while the, there is a consideration of an ordinance granting the food scrap composting, the curbside composting service on the omnibus portion of the agenda tonight, this committee update is really to give more deeper insight on what this service may entail as well as the third party that is being recommended, Waste Not Composting. I will note that on the slide, you'll see that there is no budget impact for the contract that may be awarded. This is a third-party service that would be completely offered solely through the third party and it's an optional resident service. So before I'm kind of jumping into the service, I always like to give a little bit of background on how we got here. In 2020, the Environmental Sustainability Committee went through a strategic planning process and in that process, they got insight from City Council, residents, as well as city staff about different initiatives that could be brought forward. One service that was found to be a top priority was increasing access to composting in our community. So through that, the last year, city staff have been investigating multiple ways on how we could increase access. And after much discussion and deliberation, the ESC found that offering a third-party vendor who could provide a curbside composting service would be the most financially feasible, attainable, and practable, practical solution for this goal. So with that being said, we, well, I actually wanted to say one thing. It should be noted in that comprehensive assessment that we did look at offering this service in-house in the sanitation department. Unfortunately, due to a number of concerns with staffing, safety, and just health concerns, as well as our current permitting at the compost and recycling center, it was not seen to be a viable option. So with that being said, Waste Not Composting is the recommended vendor for the service. To give a little bit of an overview, they were founded in 2015 and are now the Chicago's leading compost collection provider. They've also been the number one compost collection service in the U.S. for the last three years, which is really incredible. There is a thorough detail of how they were evaluated. They did go through a request for, a competitive request for approval process as well as a finalist interview. So to get a little bit more into the fun side of this, the service that actually be offering, Waste Not offers multitude of services, but the two most prominent services that would be offered here in Lake Forest are the residential and commercial services for composting. So starting with the residential services, all households in Lake Forest, as well as apartments and condominiums, would be able to access or sign up for this residential service. It generally mirrors a traditional sanitation service where a provided container, in this case, you can see in that picture, a five-gallon bucket, would be dropped off at a customer's home and then emptied on a weekly or bi-weekly basis based on the customer's preference. And they would pay a fee based on that preference, on weekly or bi-weekly service. That said, one difference in this service, and that was something that we put in our proposal, was that this, we would utilize a container swap strategy. So what that means is when a customer places their, their bin outside, Waste Not will come and they will take the full bin and then replace it with a new clean sanitized bin. So you will not see any tipping. The customer does not need to clean out their bin. That was something that was important to us for ease of use. When it comes to the commercial service, again, this is kind of a very similar. The only difference here is there are larger containers. You can see there's 32 or 64 gallon totes. Waste Not is really the commercial leader in compost, composting right now. They work with companies like Starbucks, Chipotle, Sweetgreen. So we feel very confident in being able to attract businesses here in Lake Forest for this service. I will note that the ESC, next meeting in July, we plan on partnering or working with the Chamber of Commerce as well as working with school districts in the area to see if they want, how we can promote and use this service and partner with those entities. I should note that in the commercial service, Waste Not has partnered with a lot of schools. And as you can imagine, schools do have a lot of food waste when it comes to lunchtime. So this would be something that we're really excited about. Finally here, Waste Not will handle, this was in the write-up as well, but they handle all operations regarding the program. This includes registration, billing, reporting, and customer service. The city will really be on the promotion and partnership side as well as communication, as we know that's critical. So while the service is relatively straightforward, we did want to just, I just want to note a few things that Waste Not offers and their advantages that members and customers can kind of get used to. So as you can see here, it might be a little difficult, but in the top right, that screen is actually the member portal. It's an online intuitive portal that customers can go in and look at their account and billing. They can change their pickup frequency and edit their schedules as well as Waste Not offers a lot of great data metrics and reporting in there. We thought that was a really cool tool that was unique to Waste Not. One reason that we're really excited about the data metrics is we'll actually, the city will be able to have this portal as well and be able to monitor participation in the community as well as you'll see very, at the very top, the amount of pounds diverted. We can actually collect how many pounds that have been diverted from our collection cycles from Waste Not as they report that. And then we can essentially see the savings we are collecting from that based off not having to collect those pounds of food and then pay for them in tipping fees, if that makes sense. A few other things that I, we, you know, we're really passionate about Waste Not where they are commitment-free. So if you sign up for one week and no longer want the service, you can get rid of it. There's no year-long program, anything like that. And they're also zero emissions. So they, Waste Not's the nation's only zero emissions compost collection. They own the largest electric fleet in Illinois. So that was certainly something in our evaluation that we thought was very impressive. I won't go into depth on the pricing here, but one thing to note was that Waste Not was the most competitive in pricing. They had the lowest residential prices of all the bidders and all the proposals that were sent in. Highlighted here, the five-gallon bi-weekly residential service. This is their most popular service. So it's $14 a month. We could expect to see that service be the most popular in Lake Forest. Finally here, last but not least, I know everyone is curious about what can and cannot be composted. One thing Waste Not does great is they have a lot of educational materials to make sure that people know they're composting correctly and can learn more about it. They also just offer a, a large amount of items that can be composted. So you see food waste, paper products, and also compostable materials. I know I went through that rather quickly, but at this time, I would yield any questions? Yeah?
Do we have any sense on an average, whether it's a two-person or four-person household, how long does a, I know everything is going to vary by home, but it's hard to imagine is five gallons a, like, do you need it every week or is there a general?
Sure. From what Waste Not has let us know, knowing that the bi-weekly five-gallon service is the most popular, I would assume that it takes about two weeks for the average family to fill that up.
I have a question. And I'm pleading ignorance now. What happens to that pork chop when it goes in that can? Where does it go? What do they do with it?
Waste Not, where they take it?
Yeah. I mean, what's the process? I mean,
So that's
How do they monetize it other than being another garbage pickup service? I'm just curious about the economics behind it.
Sure. So one thing that I know that has been difficult for communities who have community toters where everyone can go compost and throw their stuff in, it's not where everyone can go compost and throw their stuff in, it's not monitored or audited, and that compost ends up kind of being almost hazardous or not usable. So I believe in their kind of model, when they're using it at each resident household, they can really monitor the correct, people are composting correctly, and then they take that compost to a service facility, I believe, in western Illinois, where it then is turned into compost and then sold back. So that's where the economics make sense. I could get, I could get more detailed information on the economics, but it seems like it's working as they're expanding relatively largely, and they do have an all-electric fleet.
Yeah, in addition, sorry, in addition to the service fee, they sell the compost back at the end of the cycle, and actually, the residents will have the chance to get back compost as part of their agreement, so there is that aspect to it as well.
So am I correct that you pay them to come get it, and then you pay them to get it back?
So I, this is, and I will note that we went through a lot of options, and we did survey the community. The number-one barrier to composting in this community, once we surveyed, was ease of use. So we do offer a composter right now that is a backyard composter, it's called the Earth Machine. That said, you do have to bring it back there, you have to move it around, you have to compost yourself, right? And there are a lot of residents in this community from our survey results that are passionate about being sustainable and helping the environment. They would just like to do so in the easiest way possible.
Sure. Is there any evidence of a commitment from the school districts, and I don't know anything about their cafeterias, to actually utilize this service?
So Waste Not has partnered with multiple school districts around the Chicagoland area.
I'm referring specifically to ours.
To ours. So I'll note kind of what they do unique compared to some other competitors that bid. Usually, what we see from some other competitors is they kind of rely on the janitors or the janitorial staff to pick up the pace on this, but Waste Not actually has a compost champion program when it comes to schools. So they work with students to be kind of a champion of it, make sure they're learning, they see better engagement in the process, they learn in the process, and it's either upperclassmen, like, you know, fifth or sixth graders maybe, who can, who kind of monitor it and then make sure that students are committed. I would say that working, Waste Not has a great amount of experience about working with school districts, and I believe if they go in and kind of sell their pitch, they could be, they could be persuaded.
Okay. Are there any other questions? That does sound highly competitive, that particular position. Okay, thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is items for omnibus, omnibus vote consideration. There are 14 items this evening, and I would ask you all to consider as we go through them, if there are any that you would like removed or taken separately, and we'll ask again at the end. The first item is approval of the June 5, 2023 City Council meeting minutes. Second item, amendment to the previously-approved regularly-scheduled meetings of the Lake Forest City Council for the year 2024. Third item, consideration of an ordinance amending the City of Lake Forest City Code regarding the Class A2 liquor license. First reading and, if appropriate, final approval. Number four, approval of tentative agreement on wages with the local chapter of the Metropolitan Alliance of Police, and approval of an amended FY24 pay plan. Number five, consideration of a request to waive the fidelity bond requirement in connection with holding a raffle in the City of Lake Forest for the Friends of Lake Forest Parks and Recreation Foundation. Number six, consideration of an ordinance granting a food-scrap curbside composting service franchise agreement between the City of Lake Forest and Waste Not Composting. First reading and, if appropriate, final approval. Number seven, approval for the purchase of a Zoll 10 Series cardiac monitor with an extended warranty in an amount not to exceed $48,060.63, and authorization to dispose of city property with a value in excess of $4,000. Number eight, approval of a recommendation from the Public Works Committee to award a one-year professional services agreement extension to multi-system management company to provide janitorial services at city facilities in the amount of $231,180. Number nine, ratification of an emergency purchase of a replacement Parks Section pickup truck approved by the city manager to Castle Motors of McHenry in the amount of $58,944. Number 10, approval of a recommendation from the Public Works Committee to award the thermoplastic lane-marking bid to Superior Road Striping in the amount of $93,000. Number 11, approval of an agreement with Strand Associates for advanced metering infrastructure professional consulting services for the water meter replacement project in the amount of $72,460 with a 5% or $3,623 contingency. Number 12, award of a bid in the amount of $99,500 with a 5% or $4,975 contingency to Midwest Power for the Lake Forest Water Treatment Plant Emergency Generator Radiator Rebuild Project. Number 13, approval of a resolution to adopt the 2022 Lake County All Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan. Number 14, approval of design engineering services for the Elawa Parking Lot Improvements to Black Engineering Company, and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement in the amount of $29,400 to include a contingency in the amount of $5,416 for a total cost of $34,816. Is there any item that you would like removed or taken separately? Hearing none. I would ask for a motion to approve the 14 omnibus items as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Maybe we have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Goshkarian.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Five yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
The next item on the agenda is old business. I believe there is none this evening. New business, there is none this evening. Are there additional comments by City Council members?
Never missing an opportunity. Mayor, thank you. I just want to make mention of the fact, and I'm sure it will be posted sometime soon, last Friday, we had Meet the Fleet out at Municipal Services, and that's where Public Works rolled out all of their equipment, and everything was on display. And I think last year, there were 400-some-odd visitors, and I believe this year, it went up to 600. You know, I'm pretty certain if Eileen were in town, she would have been able to make a comment about her if she was there with her kids, but I know she was working. But it was really quite a success, and I think it's, it's great that you see so many young and new faces there, and it shows really community engagement. You know, there were things, every type of equipment was there. The staff gave away some really neat, fun things for the little girls and little boys that were there to attend, and there was tremendous engagement. You know, one of the things that came to mind for me as I was walking out of there was Public Works works, and it does a really, really great job. And it not only does a great job in every aspect that they do throughout the city, but so often, we have our more forward-facing staff members, be it in the Parks and Rec Department, or in the police or fire department, and often, the men and women in Public Works are kind of the unsung heroes, and they're the ones who are working on the streets and everywhere else. And, you know, they really just do an amazing job, and I just wanted to take the brief time to mention them and say thank you for all that you do. And on a final note, I had just some brief words with staff, and I know there's been some discussion of it, but I want to say that I think it's a wonderful idea. You know, we have the Citizens Fire Academy, which I've taken, which has an opportunity for the citizens to become engaged with the, our firefighter, paramedics, and see what's done on that side of public safety. And we do the Citizens Police Academy, which is really, again, a lot of fun, and I know several of my colleagues have done it. I think it would be a wonderful opportunity to explore through Mayor TAC and through Public Works Director Thomas, to see if we can provide some type of opportunity for citizen engagement there, because it's a big, important part of our city. And they do so much, and more often than not, sometimes, we just don't even notice, which is a good thing. But I think the more we learn about the way our city works, the more of a community we become. So, again, just hats off to everybody for last Friday. It was a great, great event, and I hope that, you know, that might be something that might come to fruition in the future. That's all I have to say.
Any other comments? Yeah, I would just add, you know, as a new guy, this is meeting three, I think, I think the city staff works. So I've been incredibly impressed with the passion and commitment, Jason, under your leadership with everybody, and how important all these issues are, knowing that we're all consumers of those services. So I would just say, tagging on Era's comment about Public Works, I think that's true across the board. You're going to see that as you get into Park and Rec in the Fourth of July, and all those things that, that we get to consume as citizens and people that live in Lake Forest and love Lake Forest. So thank you for, for all you do. Very good. Any other comments? I have one last comment, and I would just, again, like to thank Joe Waldeck for riding to the rescue of the City of Lake Forest. I really appreciate you agreeing to step up and serve the city. You will serve the city well. I am assured of that.
Mr. Mayor, I've been told not to ask any questions in my first meeting. I'm excited today.
Very good. Okay. Is there anything else? There being no further business, can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I have a second, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned.
Smooth, smooth.
It goes much smoother when pressed.